Order, pledge of allegiance, moment of silence, public service announcements, town administrator updates, departmental reports from police and building. For action items, we have consideration and possible action on a sewer abatement for Joanne and William Bliss. Consideration and possible action on the confirmation and appointment of Florencia Sangermano to the Open Space Committee. Consideration and possible action on the position change for David Lamontaine from Foreman to Senior Heavy Equipment Operator. Consideration and possible action on the appointment of Wendy McGregor as the Assistant Treasurer/Collector for the Finance Department. Consideration and possible action on the appointment of Marjorie Wazowski as Payroll and Benefits Coordinator. Consideration and possible action on changes to the current collective bargain agreement between the Town of Sterbridge and the Teamsters Local 170 Firefighters. To change the Lieutenant of Fire Inspection's Work Week from 48 hours a week to 40 hours a week and decreasing her time off from 12 hours to eight hours. Consideration and possible action on the appointment of Joanne Cass as a part-time office assistant to the Sterbridge Senior Center. Consideration and possible action on the selection of Board of Selectmen rep for alternate Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission. Consideration and possible action for the Board to vote on the proposed revision to the Flood Plan District Bylaw and pass back to the Planning Board to begin the public hearing process. Then we'll have old business, new business, correspondence, approval minutes, citizens' forum. So can we please start by with the pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in thy name.
Could we please have a moment of silence for the war in Ukraine, COVID, and all the senseless acts of violence around the country? Thank you. Public service announcements. Town of Sterbridge 2023 nominations papers are available at the Town's Clerk's Office. To all Boards and Committee members must complete the 2023 Conflict of Interest acknowledgements and online training, and all Board and Committee members must be sworn in before their first meeting to participate to vote. Jamie, do you have any public service?
Uh, no, thanks.
Mary?
No.
Ian?
I have none.
And I have none. All right, Robin, town administrator's update?
Um, yeah, a couple of things, a couple of items. First, um, from Robin Shabat, our Facilities Manager, we did have the auction that we had talked about approving the, uh, some items for auction. We sold 38 auction items yesterday for a value of $23,743. There are still five items for sale with no bids that will either, at the end of the week, become scrap or trash. But, so, $23,000?
Do you know what they are offhand?
I do not know what items they were.
Oh, I was just gonna say.
I know, I did sign off today on the title on a 2005 Silverado. So, good luck to the gentleman who bought it, and hopes his daughter can enjoy it.
Absolutely.
Ian?
Ian, did you know Ian did buy, it was not Ian who bought the Silverado. But sound like a 2005 Silverado, if I was 16, it would be a 17, it would be a lot of fun, so. Um, I do not know what did not. Uh, I do want to give a quick update on municipal aggregation. There's been a lot out there on social media, people asking about municipal aggregation because some towns do have it. I did have Robin look into it with our energy consultant. Um, there are, it, it, you basically have to come up with a plan if you're gonna do it, and then you submit it to the state, which reviews it for a year about, it goes up for the state for about a year, and then the town can look to do that. I want to be clear to people that municipal aggregation basically makes the town an energy broker, for lack of a better word. Uh, and what it really is about is environmental, trying to encourage green, green energy. So the reason people go into the aggregation programs is because there are three tiers of green, and the more green the program you enter is, the cheaper the cost of the energy. So that's really what it's about, but the challenge with it is that when you do a municipal aggregation, it is an opt-out program, which means that we would automatically tell every resident of Sterbridge that this is the place they're gonna buy their electricity from. They then have to actually manually go in and opt out. That, for some people, is not a comfortable scenario. Um, we'll continue to research it and look at what the prices may be, but in the meantime, I did put on my Facebook page, and we will put it on the web, Massachusetts has a site where you can compare energy costs. So you could buy from Constellation, for example, or, you know, four or five different energy companies, electricity. You could buy your electricity from them if you're buying directly through National Grid Now, and you feel you can get a better cost. Um, you can, and all of those programs have to be at least 59% green, so if there are people with environmental concerns, uh, or green energy concerns, any of these companies have to meet the state minimum of 59% green. So that will be on my Facebook page, that will also be on, um, the, uh, the, um, website, just to let people know that they can shop price, whether or not the town brokers a municipal aggregation plan or not, but in the meantime, they can shop price. The other thing with the municipal aggregation is it's a, it's a multi-year contract, so as prices fluctuate, we would be locked in. So we'll continue to look at it and see what's there, but I just want to question people, it's not this, you know, great, okay, they're just gonna lower our prices, um, and I can choose to do it. We're making a choice for every resident, and so some for-
That's not gonna be appealing to a lot of people.
To some people, that's not appealing.
Is it cumbersome to opt out, do you know, like, the paperwork to opt out?
I think it's just pretty much a website-type thing, but again, for some people, that's-
You have to access your computer.
Yeah, I, I, I'm always a little concerned about automatically putting private residents into anything. I think that that can be a little uncomfortable for some people. We certainly can encourage them to shop different, um, if green is their concern, for example, they could probably shop different energy companies and see who's doing the most green energy, and make that choice based on that individually. So the choices are there individually for them to do this, either based on price, or green, or both. Um, usually with the aggregation, you try to go for a balance of both, but the, you know, um, I, I, I'm just concerned about taking, the choice is there, but it'd be one thing if it was an opt-in, which would be great if we say, here, here's a program if you want to opt in, but the reason they're able to do it is because they get volume. Most of the towns that have done it according to what Robin had determined are larger communities. Um, there's only one other one about our size that's beginning to move that direction. Mo, and I think Charlton has it, but the, most of them are larger that are doing it. So, um, just an update on that. ARPA funding, uh, we had an ARPA meeting tonight, and we're still going through a whole group that we want to do for the second round of ARPA funding, but a little more time-sensitive. One of the things on the list is the, um, is, uh, design for 60-seater street, and I know there have been a lot of controversy over 60-seater. At this point, recreation's plan or goal is not to expand any programming on 60-seater, which I know had been a, a very sensitive area. Uh, however, that particular location is not handicapped accessible. The parking lot is not handicapped accessible, the building is not handicapped accessible, the walkway to the beach is not handicapped accessible. So at this point now, the goal is to make that a handicapped accessible facility. The portion of 60 that's the building, the beach, that'll all become accessible. The parking lot will go, the part of 60 that we all think of as, you know, what's gonna happen, where they were gonna put the field, that's gonna be the parking lot now, and it will be handicapped accessible parking lot. We are applying for a one-stop grant to pay for the actual cost of construction of that work, but, um, Annie has indicated that she can use a lot of the, the design work that was already done for the last project that did not pass. That design work still holds, but she needs about $7,500 to complete the design work for accessibility. So ARPA voted unanimously to support $7,500 of the current ARPA money, which we have 950 in hand right now, and I guess we're getting another 500, so 7,500 of the approximately million and change, uh, to that. And so I'm asking the Board to, uh, consider accepting the ARPA $7,500 fund for that.
And the reason Robin alluded to it, but that we're, we isolated just this one, it's not that we don't support the other ones, it's just that Annie indicated that this is holding up the design-
Yeah.
-and we didn't want it making our way another two weeks when we have another meeting.
And it will help us when we apply for one-stop to be able to say that we have already committed to the design of this. The, the state one-stop take, will look, Mass Works will look favorably on the town having committed funds to the design and commitment to this. And with it being a handicap accessibility project, I'm really hopeful one-stop will fund this.
Okay, so do you need a motion, or?
I do.
Um, I will move to designate $7,500 of, uh, our ARPA money to the, uh, design of a, uh, the handicap accessibility project as described here. Period.
I like it. I'll second it.
All right, we got a motion, a second, all in favor?
Wonderful, thank you. Um, now, the final thing, you should have a memo from the Worcester County Retirement System. So they gave their normal annual 3% COLA in, um, July, and then they met last month to talk about giving an additional 2%. The 2% is on the 16,000 base, it's not on the whole amount. Um, the Board voted, uh, the Worcester County Board voted unanimously, short one, I can't remember what the total vote was, but one person did vote against it, to do that increase on a fi, of a 5% COLA. It then is taken to the individual towns to determine if we want to do that. My concern with this is cost, obviously. It wouldn't impact this year or next year's budget, it would get actuarial worked into the 25 budget. They really can't give us a number, they give us this rough formula of .02 on the base of 16, times the number of retirees, but of course, that number of retirees every year is going to grow. I mean, people do pass away, but with lifespans, I asked for an amount, and they said, well, we can't do that because it's a fluid number. And I said, well, that's what you pay actuaries for, to, like, do these estimates of life expectancy and retirement age. So they can't give individual towns a number. Um, I will tell you philosophically my concern, I sit and negotiate with labor unions, some of whom are back there now, um, and we talk about keeping COLAs reasonable right now, particularly right now with what the public is facing, 1.75, I think our fire took 1.75 this year or next year, one of the years. Uh, we're negotiating with police right now, DPW took a twos and 1.75s. I have a concern philosophically with the image of a five, even though it's only on the first 16,000, um, of, of doing that at this point. They got the three, rightfully so and understandably, and I understand it's a fixed income because it's a retirement, um, it, but it is, it is the will of the Board, but from my standpoint, I don't have any hard number. Yeah, I can say .02 times 16 times the number of retirees we have right now, but I don't know what that means 20 years from now for us, and it's compounded permanently. Um, so they kind of make that number very simple, and it sounds like nothing, you know, 160,000, you know, $320 a year per retiree sounds like nothing. But what does that really mean, compounded over the next 30 years? And what is that gonna be for our retirement contribution? I have some concerns about that. Uh, it is a Board vote, um, if the Board supports it, obviously, we fund it, and it's not gonna break the, it's not gonna break our taxpayers' backs over the next few years. I'm just concerned, concerned about the long term, and again, uh, when I'm sitting negotiating with active employees, and it's gonna benefit them in the long run, but in the short run, I'm looking at what people who go to work every day are making and what I'm offering for wage adjustments, we don't even call it a COLA now, comparatively. So, again, it's the will of the Board, but I, I'm a little uncomfortable with it, to be perfectly honest.
Um, if I may?
Yeah, of course.
Yes, so I think that makes perfect sense, Robin. Uh, I think the distinction, though, is because they're retirees and they're on a more of a fixed income, that I'm a little more laissez-faire almost about this. I also have the benefit of knowing Michael Sacco very well, who's the CEO of the Worcester County Board and represents most of the Boards in the state, and he's quite fiscally conservative. Um, I do think, though, that you're dovetailing into a larger conversation around retirement boards, which is pretty significant, 'cause what the returns, I am very curious about the returns that they're getting on their Board, uh, on their funds, because of the amount of money. I've seen certain years where some of these pension funds are pulling like zero, 2%, where you can just put that amount of money in the bank and do better. So I, I think that you're right to do an analysis, I, I think your logic is sound, but given the immediate impacts on seniors in the area, I'm still inclined to give the 2% because they gotta live, and it's pretty brutal at the grocery store right now. Um, so that's what I'm thinking.
Uh, may I?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm leading Jamie's way, too. Um, I get that, you know, we're being very conservative with our labor unions, but I, I do feel they're retired individuals, the retirement, it does make it a little bit different for me. Um, and like you said, it isn't going to-
No.
...break the bank.
No, no, we can, we can handle it financially.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I guess that's, that's how I feel.
Ian, do you have any?
I mean, everybody wants to give people a better retirement, you know, at heart, but I think I tend to be more on the conservative side and would be more in favor of just maintaining the current rate of increase.
I, is there a deadline on this, or is it something that we need to jump into right now, or can you look into a-
We look at that memo, I think we could wait another month if you wanted to, they sent us the memo-
Votes must be held before June 30.
Yeah.
So this fiscal year.
Yep.
So we have, we have room to-
I mean, being kind of you looking into it a little further-
Okay, let me see if I can get some, an actuary to actually give us real numbers.
Yeah, yeah.
That would be great.
Yeah, and if we can, maybe if we can reach out to him and say, look, we need something more concrete, in 20 years, what's this gonna cost?
Yeah, exactly.
'Cause I just don't believe, you know, when I asked the question on the meeting, the, the couple of the people on the meeting were like, well, we can't figure that out. I'm like, well, I can't go to my Board without, like, some-
Right. When is the last time we ever gave an additional cost of living adjustment, do you know?
I don't know. I mean, they give the 3% all the time, but I don't know when they've ever done so.
I think it's an estatutory, the, I think it was a statutory exception for the moment because of the inflation.
Yeah.
Okay.
The dramatic swing.
Yeah, so this isn't a normal-
That's all this was, but it's gonna stay up, so that's-
I get it, I get it, it's a change that's going to impact into the years to come.
Yeah, you're basically raising that base.
Yeah, no, it's, and it compounds.
Yep. And I mean, we are, in all honesty, when we're negotiating contracts, one of the things we're moving toward, and I've started moving toward, are, um, you know, instead of longevity, doing, uh, senior steps, which go into the base, so it, for the future of our own employees who retire down the road, they're gonna do better because what we're incorporating, instead of $500 on longevity or $300 on a longevity check, if we can work it right into their base, um, they'll gain that on retirement. So I'd rather have them earning it while they work and then get the higher retirement as a result of what they did while they were active, but-
Now, Governor Baker, so this had bipartisan support, right, if Governor Baker-
This happened under Governor Baker, yes.
So it had, I mean-
Yes, it did.
Okay.
Yep, it certainly would've had it. Yep. And it goes to the individual selectmen so that there is a local voice.
Right.
Yeah, I think it's two-thirds, it said.
Yeah.
Two-thirds of the communities have to vote for it for it to pass.
Yeah, if, I mean, that's the other thing in Worcester County, if, if two-thirds don't vote for it, it's not gonna pass anyway.
Even if we go for it.
If you go for it, it's not individual to your town, no.
Okay.
So we can wait, and I'll bring it back, and I'll see if I can get a better actuarial number, let me talk to, I mean, I, I think they've gotta understand that we can't blindly support something like this unless we know what the law, I don't know what I'm locking the town into 15 years from now.
Right.
If life expectancies go up the way they have, though I think this year they dropped a little bit, but, I mean, they, they've been increasing, it sounds terrible to say. We certainly want people to live longer, but there's a cost to that.
You just wanna pay them.
I know. I have a seat.
And I think every time we make, we make an increase, that we say won't break the bank, 100 of those decisions now break the bank.
Exactly, that's the consequence.
That's true, but this is, this type of money is a little distinct, though, because this 2% on the $16,000 is impacting lower-aged retirees, so as a consequence, those people are spending every single one of those dollars, and it's going right back into the community, and they all live here for the most part, or perhaps in the South, but either way, it's, it's-
Florida's making it now.
It's coming, it's coming back.
Yeah, it's coming, it's-
Governor's assistants just getting it, that's all.
Yeah.
Jamie, vote against.
Yeah. I'm not getting in any of that. Nope. Okay, so we'll hold on that, okay? And then, um, and that's it for me, I'm sorry, it took a while, actually, we had a few things.
Okay, great, no, thank you. All right, tonight, we're, uh, we'll start with department reports, police, chief, you wanna come up and?
I'll start with November, I have November and December. November, we answered our communication center, answered 2,782 calls for service, we had 60 arrests, five OUIs, two drug arrests, 40 incident reports were taken, 335 citations were issued, and, um, called for mutual aid on 12 times in, in November. Those are the highlights of our calls. Um, for Department Operations, Sergeant Murray, Officer, Sergeant Murray, Sergeant Forty Year, Officer Crevier worked the Home of the Brave 5K race, they, we got a lot of positive feedback from, uh, different people in the community, different people that ran it, for those officers that did that. Officer G. Gear helped delivering turkeys to, throughout the community, working with our, our chaplain in their church, delivering turkeys to the senior center. So that was nice, and then, um, the big thing was we got our comfort care dog from the Hillis Foundation, Rocky, came, came on board and is doing well, I was gonna bring him tonight, but he was on-
He just had a birthday, correct?
Yeah, he's not able to make it, so probably I'm gonna try-
Oh, he's not coming tonight?
No, I wasn't, he, uh, there was some issues that came up that he couldn't make it tonight, so maybe the next-
He had plans.
Yes, yeah. He had a birthday party. It was a surprise birthday party, so.
The dog has more important plans than us.
Um, so we've already had great success with Rocky, and he's helped, uh, people in crisis, we've, we've gone to an unattended death where, uh, somebody found one of their parents deceased, and we deployed the canine there, and it was very helpful, right, right there on the scene, at, at that scene, so-
How old was the person that found, was it a child that found the parent?
Uh, high school age, yeah.
Oh, tough tragedy.
Yep. So that was good to have that there, not only did we have the canine on the scene, we had our clinician on the scene, and we had Chaplain arriving on scene to, to just be there to, uh, be of support. Uh, training, some big training, Lieutenant Lombardi attended a command training series, executive development course at Roger Williams University. Overall, that's roughly a five-week school, it starts, and he's done it over the last three, three years, starts with a two-week, uh, first-line supervisor school, sergeant school, then a lieutenant school, two weeks, and then, uh, basically executive level, chief, chief school, which he attended. So that was, uh, he, he got that, and this, this last one, uh, we wrote a scholarship, and we got accepted to get the scholarship, so it didn't cost us anything, which normally would've been about 1,800, 1,900 bucks, so we saved that. Um, I also sent dispatcher Boyd to, to New Hampshire for a three-day leadership class, seeing she's the lead dispatcher in the Communication Center. That's about it for November, for highlights, and if you got any questions on November?
Questions from the Board?
No, no, November. Uh-oh. No, no, not in December either. I know, that sounded-
Oh, not in November.
That's obvious. Not necessarily on either report.
Okay. I'll, I'll go on to December then.
Okay, you dare.
So we ended December with a total, the calls for service into the Communication Center was 29,956 calls, which is an increase of 1,545 calls over the year. Um, as you can scroll down, you can see the significant, uh, some numbers are up, some numbers are down, that, those numbers all go back and forth depending on, um, staffing situations, what's going on, there's, there's so many variables to that. But what I do want to point, point out to you, again, this is very important, is the 179 times that we had to call for mutual aid to have another police department come and help us, because we did not have people to answer these emergency calls, and I gotta emphasize they're emergency calls, that our people are tied up on and cannot answer the calls, and we have to ask the state police, Brookfield Police, Brimfield Police, Southbridge Police, or Charlton Police to come help us, because we do not have the people working to do this. Um, and 179 times in a year, to me, is unacceptable for a police department of our size, a community of our size. If you take the comparison and you say, how many times do we respond out of town? And it's 15 times throughout the year that we went to help other communities. So I think that's important for the Board to know and recognize that, um, that's not a good situation for us to be in. Uh, Department Operations, Lieutenant Bateman, along with Officer Crevier and Dispatch Boyd O., and Com Toys participated in a toy drive of the Public Safety Complex, were able to fill up the, uh, trailer full of toys and give them to less fortunate kids in our community and surrounding communities. Uh, we actually, there was a, around this time, there was a house fire in, in Wales, I think there was five children that were displaced, and we were able to help that whole family with coats, toys, gift certificates, all kinds of different stuff, so, uh, that was very, very successful. We host our annual senior Christmas dinner, that was successful, we had, um, Santa Claus show up, every senior was able to collect a gift card for one or two places in the community, and, um, again, that was a very successful event. That's really the highlights of December. And if you have a question, not on November or December, I can take that.
No, my only question was, 'cause I've had a few residents asking me now, the day spa.
Yeah.
It is reopened under a different license and different ownership, too, or what, what is the status of their reopening?
So different, different, uh, ownership, yes.
Okay.
Uh, they are opening, I just heard, I just talked to the detective about it yesterday, they're, I guess they're in the process, or they are changing the name, uh, because if you-
That's useful, 'cause I think residents just think it's a continuous-
Well, and it very well could be, I can't say that until proven otherwise, but until it's proven otherwise, it's a legitimate business. Having said that, um, if you Google Missy Spa, it's gonna come up with all the stuff that we have put out to the public.
That's what I, I mean, name change would be-
So it's in their benefit to change the name, A, because people are knowing the police are gonna watch it, and we're gonna continue to watch it, I have no problem publicly saying that if, if that type of business continues to run, whether it's the different owner or, I'm not, we will continue to watch it, monitor it, we are still doing that, so-
Okay, but different license, different ownership.
Yeah.
And what's the status of the criminal proceedings?
That is, uh, that's coming up in the next week or two, the, the first level of the hearing.
Okay.
I believe that might even be next week or the week after.
Is that like the arraignment, I don't know, like, what could've been?
Yeah, it will be an arraignment, and, um, you know, I would not, you know, we'll, we'll see how the courts go, but I would not be surprised if it is dismissed right out of the arraignment level, I just, I won't be surprised, I'm not saying that's gonna happen, but, uh, I see that a lot with a lot of cases, so. Uh, but we are continuing to be down there, publicly, you, we'll see, you'll see unmarked cruisers sitting there monitoring traffic going in and out of there. It's a very, very difficult case, we can't put undercover police officers to go in there and do this type of stuff, it's just, that's not something we can do. So to, uh, get a solid case, it's very, very difficult, you gotta get confessions from people, mostly the men, and that's on a traffic stop, if you have a legitimate reason to stop them when they're leaving the place, equipment violations, whatever the case may be, and then after an interview, if you have, if you're lucky enough for that, they say, yeah, I paid for whatever they may have paid for, then you may, um, you may, that's how you start building your case, and that's how we built our case last time, and if we have to do it again, that's what we're gonna do, so.
But now, last time, we, it was dismissed, from my understanding, but it wasn't because of insufficient evidence, right? It was other reasons that they decided not to prosecute, right?
With the one that crossed from Cracker Barrel?
Correct.
Yeah, that was, um, I don't-
It became a federal case, I thought you had told me, because it claimed-
No, it, that was, um, I don't remember the exact details on that, but I know we, we did a search warrant, we seized a lot of cash, there was a lot of cash business out of there, we had to give everything back, computers back, everything back, it was, they wouldn't prosecute it. There's some, something with the immigration status-
Right.
-that if they plead to, um, or they say that they are seeking, um, asylum?
Political asylum.
The asylum.
That's what I was, that's what I meant by a federal case.
Yeah, then, then these cases are getting dismissed, so, uh, there's where we're running into problems, so the only thing we could do is, you know, what we've been doing, try to be aggressive in the area, motor vehicle stops, let people know that we're watching it, and, and hope that this new business is not the same business, uh, but we are, we are still working on that, again.
All right, just get on-
And thanks to our detective, who, you know, uh, prior to having a detective this year, we would not be able to designate the time and effort that he has put into this, this case to, to work on this, so.
No, thank you, just because residents care, and maybe we'll just continue to watch updating, up, an update on whether or not it does move forward at the state level or if gets to succeed.
I've been, uh, mixed feelings on whether I should say, hey, like a social media post, that we are watching this business, or, but I don't also wanna attract more people to this business, you know? So I don't, it's, it's one, you know.
But I just think it's helpful being, that people are told, it's a different license, it's a different ownership.
Absolutely, yeah. And they're gonna be changing the name, but that doesn't mean everything's legit, so.
Chief, I had a question about the card readers at the gas stations. I know someone sent me the Facebook post that you guys on Route fifteen found them there. Have you found them at other gas stations in town?
Just the pilot, and I wanna say there was four or five of them, and this was on two separate incidents that they were located.
Yeah.
And I was in a department head meeting today, and we're talking, I'm gonna work with the detective about maybe having Bruce from the cable little access channel come out, and maybe try to take one of those and do a video and post on social media, so we can see what, what, so the public can see how sophisticated they are, and maybe what to look for. They're very difficult to detect.
That'd be great.
So, I'm gonna try to see if we can do that. Uh, we are working with the, we've tapped into the Secret Service and FBI to help us with this case, because, you know, these are skimmers, and they're, they're taking credit card numbers, and it's a big, big theft. And it could be very high-tech, where we may not be able to get anything, but we're not sure right now if somebody's in a parking lot with a laptop and it's going wireless, or these devices have their own storage, and people are going around putting them in, a couple hours later, coming back, pulling them out. And from what I understand, I did not go to the scene for this, but, uh, it's very difficult to detect. They stick to the, the pump, and it looks like it's part of the pump, so you wouldn't really know unless you start playing with the edges probably, to see if anything's loose, and then that's when you'll be able to detect it. So, we're working on trying to get some type of public presentation out there to educate everybody a little bit better on it.
That'd be great, if you could do that.
That's, we're gonna try to do that.
A place like Pilot's a prime target, because most of the users aren't, they're not there more than once, right?
And big company credit cards, too, you know? They're, they're using big, big cards there, so. But a lot of local people go down there from Connecticut in here to Holland to get gas, so.
Yeah.
People who live up on Lead Mine.
Yeah, I'm there three times a week.
Okay, now, are you? Oh, yeah, fine. No, I saw that on news, actually.
Wow, cool. All right, any other questions from the board? Chief, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Chief, tell the dog to prioritize us next time, please.
I know, I know.
All right, next up, building. Nelson, you wanna come up then?
Good evening to the board. Um, haven't been here in a while, so we've got like six months, but, um, if the chairman would be okay with it, I'd like to just run through the first, because I've got a lot of stuff I wanna talk about, so, uh, the first six months, I'll just list out what the totals were, if it's okay.
Absolutely.
Um, on building, July, the total was, permit fees was twenty-two, three sixty, three forty-six, forty-eight. Uh, August was eighteen, nine, twenty-eight. September was five thousand, nine sixty-one. October, twenty-three, six forty. November, seven thousand, nine ninety-two. Now, December was seventy-three, two ninety-seven. I'm not sure why, but I guess the point I wanna make is, we, we take quite a bit in fees. We, we well taken enough to, to pay, to cover our costs, because those would be the last six months of the year, and I, I think the first six months were even better. And it was like, the total's like one fifty-two, one sixty-four, ninety-six. So, I mean, we're, you know, we're a pretty busy department. I'd like to get into the good stuff. Um, ongoing commercial properties, which I, I think is important, that the public hears it, you people as selectmen hear it, and that way everybody knows what's going on, because, um, there's a lot of stuff going on in Sturbridge, a lot of good stuff, and I'm gonna bring it all out tonight, a lot of the things that are happening. And what I do is, I, I list ongoing commercial properties. And, uh, some of them are more important than others, but, uh, two-twenty Holland Road, uh, if anybody's gone up there, they've got that golf court, cot building, they're, they're building it out of metal, uh, to put the golf carts on it, not a big deal. Two-seventy-five Main, which is the Chamberlain House, if anybody's going by there lately, it looks really nice. They did the front porch over, and now they're siding the building and everything, and it needed some work, uh, because it was, it was pretty beat, you know, and, and they're doing it historically, so it looks old, which is really nice for the town. And, and, you know, they, they always keep a nice place. Five-fifty-nine Main, it's the, um, it's the mill center there. Um, you wait now, Deep Roots Whiskey Distribu-, Distillery, that opened up, so next door, where that taco place was, they, they're taking it over, they're gonna put an ax throwing, uh, place there, um, to complement their, their business they have now, and I think that's gonna bring people into town, and it'd be interesting.
Very popular.
Very popular, yes.
Whiskey and axes.
I don't know about the whiskey, but I-
Just another Saturday at the convenience store.
Don't have too many whiskeys, though.
I think it's very satisfying when that hammer sticks.
Uh, Forty Main Street, I just wanna mention Edgewood's Gas. If you go by there, it has taken a while, but if you look at it and you look at the inside, it really, really looks nice. Think about what the building used to look like and what it looks like now. It's, it's, it, it's an, you know, it's an asset to the town. It makes the town look better. Uh, Two Brookfield Road, uh, what it is, they have the two buildings there, the old Rivesse's building, I have signed a final on it, uh, back one I haven't. I try to work with any builders, and, and I'm gonna be talking about the Saint Lorenz later tonight, too, and, uh, I, I try to, we try to help everybody we can in the town, and, uh, you know, this way, by me signing off on our first building, they can rent it out, they've got the, they're all paved, now they're working on the second building, and we'll talk about that later, too. Uh, the old Friendly's, uh, it's coming along. Uh, I think what happened is, is Teddy, you know, uh, they found there was more work in it than they thought, but they're doing a really good job. They're doing it right. It's coming along. They're working on the inside. Um, I think it'll be a while before it opens, but once it does, I, I truly believe that'll be a big asset. A lot of people, I'm sure, will be going there.
You think by the summer, or?
Yes, yes. And I think people, from what I'm hearing, they're excited about the building, and they want it to open, and, you know, you know, because, uh, it, it, it's a good spot. Um, and then, um, the next thing I have is, and, and I wanna mention here, I got a couple of things I duplicated on, so instead of seventeen items, there's really fifteen, but that's okay. Uh, Connaught Lodge, there's some ramps going in there for handicapped, accessible. One-seventy-eight Main, Autozone, they're fit up. They've got all their walls and all their petitions and everything up. I think they'll be opening probably in a couple of months, because, uh, you know, they, they do a lot of them, so once they get to that point, it's pretty quick. Um, seven-oh-nine Main, that's at F and G Plastics, they're doing another clean room, and they've done a few since I've been here. They really uh, seem to be growing, or they stay real busy. It's a, it's a really good company to be in, in Sturbridge, and, you know, good tax base. Uh, four, uh, six-forty-nine Main, which is Sullivan Tire, uh, you're gonna be seeing the outsides being done over, the insides being done over, uh, at the department head meeting, that was brought up, too. And, um, the good thing about that, they're very competitive with their tire prices and everything, and I think a lot of locals will be going here. I think a lot of other people will be going here. It'll bring people into town to buy tires, and then they'll spend money at other places, so I, to me, that's, that's great. Um, two-fifteen Main, which is a Dunkin' Donuts, and it's next to the Cracker Barrel, they're doing the inside over. They did two of them, so that's the third one. They're kinda making it more modern, you'll see more tile in there. It, it looks nice, you know? It's, it's getting rid of the older look. Uh, and, um, a hundred Charlton Road, uh, and the old Maurice, the Pants Man's area, the Old Navy is gonna be opening soon, uh, second time around, couple buildings up, they were there before, you know, but, uh, people are excited about it, and, you know, hopefully they do well. Um, here's something interesting I wanna say, and I said this at the department head meeting. I, I can't say enough about our school system, and the high school, and especially the technical part, instructors. I've got to know quite a few of them, and I tell you, to me, they're amazing. They, they do a great job. They teach the kids. They have a lot of patience, whether it be building, electrical, whatever. So what they're doing now is they pulled a building permit. If, if you, if you're familiar with the, uh, school, there's a area that's, that's outside, but it's closed, and the building goes all the way around it, and, and this is where they're gonna take, and they're gonna simulate a rooftop. They're building it now, because they took out the permit, and then they're gonna put panels on it, and an electrical department, for the kids in an electrical department, you know, they're gonna go through it, they're gonna explain panels, they're gonna wire panels, they're gonna understand. And this, this is the big coming thing in this world, so they're staying up with, with the times, so. Again, I, I just wanna say, we, we're lucky to have such a great school system, and, and, you know, that just shows part of it and what they're doing. And then, um, there's two of these I had up, up earlier, so I'll go to the Noble Energy. I'm hoping, they're hoping to open in like March or so. They're doing well. Um, the biggest thing they'll have to do to open will be to pave it, and, uh, I think, and Chase would know this, I think they'll, they'll have to find a paving company that's open, but someone was saying, in Uxbridge, you know, they probably got paving from them, so once they start paving it, it'll go quick, and, uh, hopefully they'll get open soon. But, but they're moving right along. It's, it's quite an operation, quite a project they're doing there. Um, and then, um, thirty Main and twenty, which is right next to that, um, to the gas station, Edwards, that fifty-five and over, people have been asking me about it. What happens is, uh, that had to go through planning, they had to do the road there. Uh, the owner of the land is responsible for the first part of the road, and then they're responsible for the later. I think once, and they're doing a lot of blasting, so they're having, not trouble, but I mean blasting's blasting, they're gonna deal with a lot of things. Once they get through that, I think the upper section, you'll see go a lot quicker, because the people that, that will have owned that will be investing their money, and, uh, they've done a few of those projects, and I think that'll go right along, too, and which will be nice, because you have a lot of people in town that, that, that have a hard time to afford to pay the taxes, live in town, the bigger houses, and they're anxious, and they're already asking, you know, what's the price gonna be for the manufactured homes, and, you know, I think you're gonna see some of them, residents in town now, that will stay in town because of that particular community, which I think will be good. And, and the older people, they like the communities, and the community halls, and, and all that stuff, so. Another really good project.
And how many, just refresh my memory, how many, um, homes are-
I, I don't remember exactly. I wanna say there's like a hundred, somewhere a hundred ninety-six, something like that, if I, if I remember right, but, um, okay?
The unfortunate part is, I think with the manufactured homes, they don't count toward our ten percent affordable. I don't, Nelson, do you know, I think, if I'm not mistaken-
No, they don't.
Yeah, so unfortunately, though, we have to meet the ten percent affordable housing. Unfortunately, manufactured homes, even though these, some of them likely will be affordable, um, will fall into the range mathematically, they don't count, so, just as an aside for the board.
Is that project on, um, on time? Is that moving, or, because it seems-
I, I think it's slowed down because of the, because of the blasting, but I think once they get past that, it'll pick right back up again, because it, because it has seemed to have been delayed because of that, you know, so. And then, uh, I'll go through this quite, kinda quick, done commercial projects. Uh, anybody that's, that's looked around, EV charging stations at, where the Shaz is and stuff, there's a whole line of them. So, we've got a lot of places where you can go and charge your electric cars. Um, of course, one-seventy-eight Main, Planet Fitness is open, they're, they're doing a great business. Days Inn, back of the pilot, is straightened away, and then the, uh, two cold storage buildings, then Deep Root Distribu-, uh, Distillery, and then five below, they're open. Now, upcoming projects, I, I wanna mention, there's like, uh, three of them that, that I think of. Uh, the Mexican Cuisine Restaurant, Condessa, um, they're still coming, um, at, at one-seventy-eight Main. Um, I believe you have one down, Robin, near you, maybe, a Condessa? I think they're down your way, towards Rhode Island.
I think there is one in Rhode Island.
But, uh-
Or in the, on the Massford Island border, toward like Attleboro, I think.
I, it's gonna be an upgraded restaurant.
I'm gonna do this.
Oh, that's right.
It'd be upgraded restaurant. Again, I think it'll bring people into town. I think it'll be a good, you know, add to the restaurants we have now. Um, on that, on that address for the interstate towing, I should've wrote six-ninety-eight Main, and it's a seven thousand square foot building. Where it is, is if you're going towards Fistale, we've got the boat ramp where, you know, it goes down, well, it's the lot just before there, and I had wrote by mistake one-fifty, so it's six-ninety-eight Main. Um, I believe they'll be starting soon. They've, they've had some things they've had to address, like conservation and different things like that. They've had planning board meetings, but they're, they're close to the point where they'll be getting a building permit soon. And then, um, here's the one I wanted to mention, too. Um, they signed a sales and purchase. Uh, again, it's the Saint Loren, it's, uh, the father and his three sons. Uh, again, uh, I wanna compliment them, because they've did a lot in town. Five-oh-five Main is right next to, um, the American Legion, okay? Uh, it's next to American Legion, and it's also next to our parking lot. If, and I think, you know, I'm sure you're familiar with the building. It's rundown, it's beat up, the roof's going. They get it, the building's gonna look really, really nice and beautiful. And I'll tell you why, that will be their fifth project, and, and I wrote down what they did, just so people will think. They did the building right next to Baskerville. Again, that thing was falling down. You look at it now, it's gorgeous. They did, uh, next to, um, the Mill Yard Marketplace, there used to be a floral shop. It had the big high roof, almost looked like a Shelley. I call it with a stone front, brick front. They did that over, it looks beautiful. Across the street, near where there used to be a sporting shop to the right, the building was really in need of work. They took it, did it over, looks beautiful. Rivesse's, they've got the two buildings, one of them they've got done, it's looking really nice. I, I just wanna say to them in particular, again, I think they've did a lot for Sturbridge. They're doing a really great job. It will be their fifth project. I mean, it, it just makes Sturbridge a better place to live, nicer buildings.
Is that a local, are they local?
Yes, they, uh, I'm not sure about the sons, but the father lives in Wales, lives in Wales. But I think even some of the sons, I think some of them might be living in a couple of their apartments, but very hard-working people, doing a nice job. And I just wanted to mention that. It's nice to mention good things, you know, and I think there's a lot of good things happening in Sturbridge. Um, uh, on that apartment where, um, the last one, if, if they do do, it'll be another one of those deals where it's Edison Apartments, so they'll be doing, you know, certain type of projects and work, living there at the same time, so they'd be like one bedrooms and stuff. But that's that, um, where that's zoned, it's zoned for that type of apartments.
No, you're not required to be at Edison to like rent it, though, are you?
What it says, uh, it, it says as a percentage. I'm not sure exactly, but I know the board of health, I mean, um, the planning will address it, as far as, is, is so many of them have to be Edison, so many of them don't, and it's, it's, that district is a commercial tourist district, and it actually allows Otis Studios, and then we have a definition for it. And then, like I say, they will, they will go in front of planning, and planning will work it all out.
I think, I wanna thank Nelson, because he's got a lot going on there, but I think important to note is that, from a standpoint of our tax base, these things all go on the rolls, once they go on the rolls, we're not looking necessarily at the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, but these new projects will likely hit our twenty-four, twenty-five, our fiscal twenty-five budget. So I think financially, this is really important for the town to know what we have coming on, and when we figure growth, one of the things we look at is what permits are out there, and likely what those property values will increase to, and what type of tangibles they're gonna have, you know, personal property and whatnot, so.
And, yeah, chances are, if they're studio apartments, not that it's a bad thing, but there'll be a lot of single people, too, so.
Yeah, not a big impact on the school system, so it's a good kind of development to have, but even these other projects that, that he's talking about are, are important. Interstate towing is gonna be, yeah, Pilot, obviously. Things like that bring money. There's some tax increments, phases for them, but generally, we're looking at, you know, anytime we can shift that tax burden onto the commercial a little bit off the residential, and all of these really are happening in areas that are not impacting the rural parts of town. So we're maintaining the integrity of town, and in the case of these apartments, they're gonna be right next to the five-oh-one parking lot, which we put that bridge across, will allow those people access to the trails and encourage that use as well.
And then when they go there, and they go to the trails, you know, they're gonna see these beautiful buildings rather than something rundown, you know?
Yep.
So I think it's great.
Yeah.
Um, the other thing I'd like to mention tonight, and I think it's important that it's brought up, and you as being selectman need to know about it, and some of you might already know, but I think you'll find it interesting. Um, I'm gonna give a little summary. Basically, in twenty-twenty-one, we got the Climate Control Act, okay, and it took the authority for, for, as far as, uh, energy code, to the D O E R, the Department of Energy, they took it away from the, from the, uh, building, uh, building, 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 code and regulations, so it's a whole new department. And when it is, they, they passed a lot of new regulations recently, um, that's gonna affect, they actually started January first, twenty-twenty-three, that's gonna affect the, you know, me issuing building permits. And, I mean, I, I've got all the regulations, all the times, it's pretty thick because of time, and I don't wanna be here all night, I don't think you do. I, I wrote down the basics of it, you know, the simple stuff, but it's stuff to, to, to think about. Now, we have what they call, when you do a new house, you, you have to do a hers rating. A hers rating, you take and you add up all your mechanical stuff, your heating, your, you know, your windows, your doors, your U-values, your R-values. You'll have to come up with what they call a hers rating. Right now, it's set at fifty-five. It's gonna go from fifty-five to fifty-two, or it has, January first. So it's gonna make it a little more difficult, but it's all, so we get to zero energy by twenty-fifty. Um, July first, twenty-twenty-four, it's gonna drop down to forty-two. I think from fifty-five to fifty-two, it's gonna be tougher to do, but at least they'll be able to do it. July in twenty-twenty-four, when it's forty-two, I think what it, it means is eventually no fossil fuel, everything's gonna be electric, uh, there'll be solar, uh, geothermal, um, because what- because what they're gonna do too is, and I'm not gonna go into detail about that, but as we go down this road a little further, they're gonna give incentives if 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 you have electrical and different things, they're actually gonna make that hers rating, there's a chart, the hers rating's higher for certain things. But we'll we'll stick with the fifty-five to fifty-two to forty-two for for, like if you had propane, something like that, that most people are using right now. But that will change, it's it's coming. And then, um, the other thing that's required is gonna be a wiring, you're gonna have to need one port for electrical cars. Um, it's, you have to do it whether you own an electrical car or not, if it's if it's a new house. Uh, multifamilies, uh, because we're the stretch community, some things are extra, that's one of them, instead of ten percent, it's gotta be twenty percent of of number of units in a multifamily. Um, roofs, they're 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 getting more serious about being solar ready for roofs, which isn't a big problem to be solar ready. The the problem probably will be, is I'm thinking, we have a lot of lakes here, by having a lot of lakes, if you have, uh, shade, that's gonna be a problem because we can't cut trees a lot of times on the lake because it, you know, affects the lake and the roots and different things. So a lot of times that solar ready is gonna be right where those trees are, what they're gonna do, I don't know, because you're not gonna kind of be solarated. But this is a problem that's gonna be worked out. I don't think, I don't have an answer, but I'm gonna tell you a secret, the state doesn't have an answer either completely. It's something we're gonna think about, we're gonna work out. A lot of this stuff I'm gonna be dealing with and be using some common sense and some of it we're gonna know and some of it we're not, but I I feel you people should know. That's what I'm talking to you tonight about, it's really important that you understand what I'm doing so that when they call you and people complain, we gotta work it out because of the new code. Additions, uh, as far as that hers rating, it used to be, it was just new houses, if you did an addition, you didn't have to worry about the hers rating or a blower door test. The blower door test is three air exchanges per hour. What they do is they take your front door, put a big fan on it, suck all your air out, they have devices, they measure it as it comes back in, and you can have three air cha- air exchanges per hour. And, uh, so so instead of all just new houses now, any addition over a thousand square feet, you're gonna have to do it. So you're gonna have to have a higher hers rate. Um, anytime you have a building, again, I think this is gonna affect, um, places on the lake because it's small. So even if you don't tear it down and you double the size, before you went to had to do all, do that hers rating and the blower door test, now, if you're doubling the size, you're gonna have to do it. Uh, um, operations, you didn't have to do it a number for, now, anything over, uh, fifty percent of your house that you're taking apart, you're gonna have to do it now. Um, here's another big one, ventilation, uh, energy recovery. Right now, when you do a new house, usually the the most you're gonna do is in your bathroom, you're gonna have a fan, a lot of times it's either timed or on twenty-four hours a day to make up for the air exchanges. Now you're gonna have what they call H R V or E R V, it's a heat recovery systems. Uh, to put it in layman's terms, if you were to go in your cellar, a lot of times you'd see them, it almost looks like an octopus with a lot of, lot of, lot of outlets ducts. And, uh, you go, you have to have them now and, uh, that's probably what I've been seeing, talking to builders and stuff, it's probably goes from twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars it costs. But it it's it's one of those things you're gonna have to do. Um, historic buildings, uh, you're gonna have to follow, unless you could, there's some options, you can get a report from the owner, design professional, or a representative from the state historic preservation office. They have to write a letter and they have to explain to me or my position that it would be detrimental to the historic building if they did it. If they don't, then they're gonna have to do it too. So that's gonna be a little bit of give and take and opinions of of my position, whoever, you know, whoever happens to be, whatever town. And then, now, this is kind of like the residential end. The commercial end, as of July of this year coming up, there's gonna be some big changes there too. They're gonna do what they call thermal energy demand intensity pathway, and it's gonna use energy software tools to figure out any building over twenty thousand square feet, what they're gonna, they're gonna have to do. At present, what you, with any commercial buildings, we've had quite a few of them in here, it's 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 the prescriptive and there's a chart, and it'll tell them what they could put in the walls, what they can put in the ceilings, what they can use for windows, that's gonna be out the window now. So it's gonna be done by engineers, you know, so that'll change. And then another big thing, if I'm reading this right, and I'm not sure, and again, it's it's not me, it's, a lot of people are gonna be chatting about this and it's gonna come up in subjects, and I just happen to be reading it quite a bit, so I wanna stay on top of it, change of use. Now, what do they mean by that? So if you have a building and you change that use of that building, does that mean you automatically gotta redo your building and and do you take it, does it come apart and get, you know, insulated or whatever to meet code? I don't know, but that's how I read it at the moment. But again, I think that might change, I think they wrote it a little bit off, maybe, maybe not, I don't know. But all these changes are gonna be coming down the road. Um, again, I was thinking if there was anything else, I think that's most of the highlights. What it is right now, it's it's MGR twenty-two, twenty-three. Oh, here's what I wanted to mention, here's something else that you you people are gonna have to decide eventually. So right now, you've got your 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 energy code, you've got your stretch energy code, which we're in, the town. Now they've got a specialized code and the towns have to opt in for it. So it has to go to a town meeting, it has to get voted on, just like most of you, probably all you remember, when we voted on the stretch code. Uh, instead of C M R twenty-two, it's gonna be two twenty-five C M R twenty-two, it's gonna be two twenty-five C M R twenty-three, ones for the for the residential, ones for the commercial. As of, they're saying their whole, they're thinking as early as July first of twenty twenty-three, you're gonna be able to vote for it, opt in for it. So it's something that the town, the town administrator has to think about, present it to you guys, does it go on the ballot, does it does not go on the ballot? Do we wanna do it, do we don't wanna do it? My opinion at the moment, I don't have enough information on it, I know it's gonna make it a lot more difficult. Um, I know with the with the stretch code, it's 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 a lot of stuff you have to do right now. Um, I think we need more information, I don't want to be do. I'll I'll try to keep up to find out, you know, when we have to vote on it. And, uh, you know, I'll relay it to to Attia and Attia relay it to you, but eventually it it will come, you know? But it's something to think about. And, uh, basically for tonight, that's pretty much everything I wanted to say.
Thank you. Uh, does the board have any questions for Nelson?
Very thorough, Nelson.
Yes, very thorough, thank you.
Nice seeing you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Have a nice night.
All right, next up, onto action items. Consideration and possible action on a sewer abatement for Joanne and William Bliss for property located at twenty-seven Audubon Way, Sturbridge. All right, wanna come, uh, come on up to the hot seat?
Um, so what I will tell you, you have a memo, you have two copies of emails that, um, that Mr. Bliss sent, so I indicated to Mr. Bliss, nice to meet you in person, just on emails, Mr. Bliss. Originally, when they got their bill, uh, they reached out within the time, within the timeframe required.
Immediately.
Immediately.
When we got home, it was, it was right when the the new, the new period was starting.
Yes, so they, when they realized they had the break, they called Shane right away. When they realized what the bill was, they reached us within the timeframe. So the policy is that Heather Barber and I review, Barbara initially reviews, make sure there's no mistake, Heather Barber and I review, to see if there's something extreme that would go against what the board general policy is, which is to deny these generally because that's, that's just the policy, water sewer, there's a break, you assume some goes down the sewer, so you pay on both ends.
Right.
In this particular case, I indicated to Mr. Bliss that we had reviewed it, there was nothing extreme in the policy that, or extreme in the situation that could determine for us that we would not have the board look at it. So it would have to go to the board for consideration, there was nothing that we could say was mathematically wrong or anything like that from the finance end. So Mr. Bliss did ask if he could speak to the board, and here we are tonight.
Thank you. Yeah, so so I understand that, you know, the policy is what the policy is and the sewer is based on water usage. And in my neighborhood, you know, we got a pretty nice neighborhood, people water their lawns, we don't water our lawn because of that policy. And, um, you know, and in my view, I don't know if, I don't know if you saw the pictures of, like where the, I got a strip of green grass down the center of my lawn, the rest of it was during the drought, it was all dried out and yellow. And, um, you know, it was, it was my thought that because of an incident, the, uh, town watering sewer shouldn't necessarily benefit by my incident that happened. It's, it's not like the town would have had that money if I didn't have a break in my line. And we never used the sewer service, we've got proof of it, it happened exactly when the time was changing, and it's to, to, just about five hundred bucks. So it's, it's a significant amount. Um, and, um, I was hoping to appeal to your, uh, sense of fairness and and, uh, understand that, you know, we didn't use water, we didn't use sewer, we certainly feel responsible for the water, I'm not looking for any breaks on that, just the sewer portion of what that water was, cause it was about, um, about four thousand gallons of water that we're paying sewer on that never touched the sewer.
So can you talk me a little bit about what happened? How did, how did it break? Did you leave it on or did it burst or?
So, so what happens is I've got a, I've got a hose that goes from the house to my deck so she can water the tomato plants.
Yep.
And we went away for the weekend, brand new hose, just by chance, the hose breaks. And it was going for two and a half days.
Yeah.
Um, we get home, what's that noise? Go out back.
Water everywhere.
Worst, yeah, worst case scenario, water's full blast going on in the backyard, streaming across my backyard, I got pictures, uh, if you'd like to see.
Such a very green grass.
Of that very green grass patch.
Pounded by hay, basically.
As soon as you saw it, you you called the water department?
As soon as we did it, we called, we called Shane to find out what the damage was, cause we didn't know how long this had happened.
Yeah.
So we wanted to find out, and, um, from the log that that he can't, he sent two guys over, and they immediately found out that it happened on, um, the second, cause we had zero usage on the first, eighteen hundred and forty-nine on the second, eighteen seventy-five, and then one eighty-eight on the next day. So, um, like I say, assuming that our normal day is somewhere between fifteen and twenty-one, I I figured, you know, twenty cubic feet of water, hundred eighty-eight minus that day, you know, it it comes to four hundred and eighty-two dollars worth of sewer that we just didn't use, so.
Yeah.
And 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 I understand, you know, people who water, that's their deal, they, you know.
Yeah, they make that choice.
They make that choice, this was not a choice, this was an unfortunate incident that, you know, the town otherwise wouldn't have had, it wasn't like I chose to do this.
And you're not disputing paying the water?
No, no.
You understand that there was a mistake?
In fact, we've already paid the bill.
Yeah, okay. Does, does the board have any questions for?
Um, I mean, so what, so the policy generally, or the practice Robin has been to deny all such appeals?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and that the water and sewer combined, based upon the premise that the utilization of water begets the utilization of sewer? And that it's just that's the connection, it's no more complicated than that?
As I understand the history of it, yes, it it's just presumed, because it's very hard to delineate when people, in some cases, when people claim, well, it was a break, some went down the sewer, some didn't go down the sewer, a leaky toilet goes which way.
Sure.
Um, so in a lot of cases, it's so hard to delineate that a lot of boards of selectmen will tend to just deny, generally.
So does Shane, is Shane of the opinion that this can be delineated?
Well, in this case, I, you know, I haven't talked directly to Shane, but that, based on the the usage being clear.
I could show you the chart, you can, you can see very clearly exactly what happened, and we weren't even home until.
And it's not that, not that I'm accusing people of anything, but it's not that there's an outdoor hot tub, it's not that there's an outdoor swimming pool and someone claimed, well, my hose broke and it happened to break into my swimming pool.
No.
Yeah, and I think, to be honest with you, I think, not, not that people would ever do that, but I think that's part of the premise that there's generally a practice of, you can't prove a lot, you know, i- i- in this particular, not you certainly, but you could say, well, somebody has a garden and they claim, look, I watered this this day, but I didn't water this this day, I, you know, I, my hope, my, my thing broke and, you know, but they're really watering a garden. So it's really hard to prove, in this particular case, I wouldn't see any reason to not believe, particularly when you have like a, a golf green in the middle of hay in their backyard. Um, and there would be no reason anybody would water just that portion, unless you're putting, practicing some putting that we don't know about.
This is, oh.
Oh, go ahead, I was gonna weigh in on the past.
This is how I feel, cause it's been practice of this board to deny these, um, in fear of Pandora's box opening. And in this particular case with you, I think you did everything right. You realize, the hose broke, you realized it broke when you got home, you called the water department immediately, you're not disputing paying the water bill.
Right.
You just don't wanna pay the sewer, and.
The sewer portion, and by the way, this is exactly when the sewer went up.
Right.
I don't know what percentage.
Yeah, and.
So it was compounded.
In your case, I would be inclined to abate the sewer bill. Me personally, I think you did everything right and I think you, you deserve it. So I don't know how the rest of the board feels. Of course.
Can I just, um, just cause I, um, have been sitting here for a while and a little bit, I was gonna say older, but actually just.
Better.
No, no, not.
Wiser.
So, I I did, you know, um, Robin was correct in to answer Jamie's question. We haven't had a lot of requests for abatements, but the ones we've had, if we have shown some fault of the town, or it's even questionable, then abatements are granted if the town has had.
If it's our fault, yes.
Number one. Um, but number two, I do recall one instance, and then we also deny typically, cause the sewer and water, as you said, are paid for, um, where we can't, you know, leaky toilets have happened, and in those instances, there's really no way to tell that no sewer was used, so we've denied. But I do recall one instance where there was flooding in a basement, um, and we did abate the water portion of it because it was a pretty, it was pretty clear cut that they hadn't used sewer. Uh, and that goes back a while, but there had, there, so it's not without any.
Okay.
So personally, I would agree with, um, our chair in this case, cause I think here, although there's no fault of the town, it it's not questionable whether some sewer was used. And I was gonna bring up, you know, but people do, because of the way we do it, and most times still do it our way, we've debated to have separate meters, uh, but that's kind of costly and cumbersome. Um, when you wa, when you put water in your pool, that's clearly not going into the sewer, but it is a conscious decision, knowing how we bill, that you're willing to, you know, incur that expense. Um, myself included, I'm like, you're aware, or if you water your lawn. So I think in this case, you know, it is pretty clear that it didn't go into the sewer. He did act immediately, and we're not without some precedent of of the past of doing it. So I am also inclined to to abate the sewer portion.
And I, and I will say, um, in speaking with Heather, to your question, I hadn't talked to Shane about the actual numbers delineation, Heather does support the fact that it it did not appear that there was any, um, sewer use.
But clearly, when they, when it's questionable, that has been the way that we've come down.
Well, that's why I figured I'd come and present it, cause it 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 happened at exactly the right time, if there was a right time.
It's always the way it goes.
Well, it's not always the way it goes, but if it happened in the middle of the month, I I wouldn't be having this conversation, cause I'm like, you know, I don't know how much sewer we used, but this was right when the new period started, and and it was, you know, painfully clear exactly what happened here. You know, the, the, the logs show it.
And like I said, precedent, I mean, there was some precedent.
It was, Mary was on the board at the time, I think it was somebody that went.
I sat there, I sat through one of these the first year, when we were, when we were on Zoom, a hundred percent I remember somebody, but it was very much less clear.
Yeah.
As to where the water had gone, and it was just, we couldn't, and again, Pandora's box, we could be sitting here every single week, bowing over our sewer bills, and that's, but this one's crystal clear, it's obvious.
Other abatements have been, look at the water usage suddenly, like, something has to be wrong.
Right.
And then we couldn't delineate, well, it it it's arguably going into the sewer too, so.
So I have a motion.
Okay.
Uh, I move that we grant William and Joanne Bliss a sewer abatement for the property located at 27 Audubon Way in Sturridge, uh, for the period of July 2nd to July 4th, to reflect, um, uh, the lack of use of sewer, uh, in, uh, has related to the hose breaking in their backyard.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All right, we have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sorry this happened.
Nice to finally meet you. I, I know everybody through email.
Next up, consideration and possible action on the confirmation and appointment of Florencia Sangar Mano to the Open Space Committee for a term to expire July 25th, 2025.
So, here she is, I saw the map, I'm looking over, I've got two of you there. So, um, Dr. Sangar Mano has, had applied originally, I believe, for conservation, and I was interviewing her for that, and, uh, her background in science, geology, uh, yeah, excuse me, geography, and, um, and her just overwhelming knowledge, um, while it'd be phenomenal for conservation, I, I also felt it would be really important for open space. So while the Open Space Committee hasn't always had as much, um, voice, let's say, it's a huge part of what this town does. We have large amounts of open space, we continue to buy and, and acquire open space, we have right now somebody who wants to donate land to us, I don't know if it's good land, bad land, not land, you know, uh, and while conservation certainly interprets the bylaws and has a critical role in that, um, just from my opinion on the, sort of coming in from the outside knew, I feel like we're so committed to open space, and we have good people on there, but the actual knowledge of what might be phenomenal on that land, what might be pitfalls on a piece of property, what geographically, geologically, wildlife, all of those things that, that she can help us with, um, made me sort of reach out and say, well, with this conversation, do you think maybe you might be interested in this? Because I think she's just gonna be an amazing voice. And the other thing that I'm hopeful, uh, is that we can have better communication between those groups, so between open space and conservation, for example. Um, so you're welcome to come up and introduce yourself to the Board. Um, so my recommendation in, in our discussions was, would you be willing to serve on open space? And in that capacity, perhaps serve as a liaison for us, um, to conservation when there are questions and we need, thank you. And we have a piece of property that they're interested, and open space is interested, and could these two groups maybe talk a little bit more? We had a situation recently where there was a question on the trails, and opaquum is, has, holds the deed restriction, and there was a question of who did what, and who told who, and, I, I mean, it's, it's fine, but had there been better communication up front, we might have been able to avoid that situation. So I'd really like, I think, that the skill set and the knowledge that she brings to kind of help us in that realm.
That's great.
Phenomenal, uh, phenomenal woman, and I'm so grateful to have her want to be part of this town.
Absolutely.
Operations.
Yeah, thank you for your interest in, in volunteering, and I know it's a lot.
You're certainly a prolific writer.
Yeah.
Yeah, most resumes aren't 16 pages that we see.
People can't fill a resume.
Yeah, I kept reading, I'm like, wow, wow.
Thank you, thanks.
So do we have any questions from the Board, or would you like to say anything, or?
Just obviously somebody who's got a lot going on.
All right, cool, is there a motion?
I will move to appoint Florencia Sangar Mano to the Open Space Committee for a term to expire July 25th, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I hope like to contribute to the town, and open space, and conservation, and any other comment.
Thank you. I like what Robin said, sometimes we love a piece of land because we're committed to open space, and you might say, this is great land, or stay away from it, or, you know what I mean?
But what land's appropriate, you know, we have a beautiful piece of land right now, and we need ball fields, but is all of it appropriate for ball fields? What should be conserved and preserved for wildlife? What should be trails? What should be, what is good for ball fields? Whatever it might be. I think that, that Florencia can bring such a wealth of knowledge to even help on the recreation front with this.
And even it's not part of my, of my research, I'm training what is called spatial analysis, and spatial decision making, so how I like to, uh, combine the information from multiple, what is called multi-criteria evaluation, how we can like consider land for multiple purposes, and I find the best purpose for that.
I mean, I, we couldn't ask, I say, I could have written a job description any better for what we need.
That's great. That's great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
So you just need to see the clerk when you can to officially swear in, and.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
All right. Next up, consideration and possible action on the position change for David Lamontaine from Foreman to Senior Heavy Equipment Operator at Step 4 of the Union Contract with an hourly, hourly rate of 3179 effective January 23rd, 2023.
Mr. Lamontaine has asked for this, he applied for the position, I realize it's unusual to want to go from the Foreman to that position, but, um, this is what he would like, and we certainly would have no reason not to have him do that, he's phenomenal a, a, across the board on whatever he does, they're pretty much in that department, and this is the area he'd like to work, so.
Sure, I will move to, uh, uh, change the position of David Lamontaine, uh, from Foreman, uh, to Senior Heavy Equipment Operator at Step 4 of the Union Contract with an hourly, hourly rate of 317961 effective January 23rd, 2023.
Second. All right, we have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor? Consideration and possible action on the appointment of Wendy McGregor as the Assistant Treasurer Collector in the Finance Department at an hourly rate of 2826 effective January 30th, 2023.
So I'm gonna, um, pull one of these, and I don't usually do this, but I'm gonna ask for forgiveness instead of permission, um, on the next two appointments. So typically, these go in front of the Board before we make a formal offer. Um, that would have, um, but we, but the people have to give two weeks' notice, a lot of times, people don't want to give two weeks' notice until the Board has approved them. That would have then put us almost four weeks out before we could bring these people on staff, and we desperately need them in finance. So I'm asking for this to be considered as a ratification of action of appointment, obviously, if you say no, it's, it's no. Uh, they're both very qualified, Barbara has interviewed both, uh, and has recommended both. Um, one actually works in a municipal school system, um, so she will have a lot, it would be very simple for her to transition over. And, uh, to be honest with you, as I said, recruitment has been challenging, so we're very grateful that these two do want, do want to come work for us. So I don't like to do this, um, but time restraints kind of put me in a spot where I, I just don't want to wait a month. With budget season coming up, I need to free Barbara up, and she's still gonna have to train these people a bit.
So you already offered them?
We have made the offer, and I just have to officially put it in front, so I'm asking for it as a ratification of an, an action, which I don't like to do to you, but I.
Makes sense of this.
Kind of felt a little trapped.
I'm furious.
Yeah, I know, I don't think, it's not what I like to do, but.
All right, uh, any questions, or if not, is there a motion?
I'll move to appoint Wendy McGregor as the Assistant Treasurer Collector in the Finance Department at an hourly rate of 2826 effective January 30th, 2023.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor? Consideration and possible action on the appointment of Marjorie Vezowski as the Payroll and Benefits Coordinator in the Finance Department at an hourly, hourly rate of $27.15 effective February 8th, 2023.
I move to appoint Marjorie Veso, Vesky as the Payroll and Benefits Coordinator in the Finance Department at an hourly rate of 2715 effective February 8th, 2023.
Second. All right, we have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you, and again, my apologies.
No, no.
Unnecessary.
Yes. Consideration and possible action on changes to the current collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Sturridge and Teamsters Local 170 firefighters to change the Lieutenant of Fire Inspection's work week from 48 hours a week to 40 hours a week, and decreasing her time off from 12 hours to?
Eight hours.
Eight, thank you.
So this, this has been an ongoing discussion, when this position was created, it was created as a typical, a traditional 48-hour position. The reality is the type of work that the lieutenant does is more of a 40-hour work week appropriate. Uh, this change does not have a net impact on the budget, any overtime she does is done at the 48-hour rate, so it's actually done at the lower rate, because if she, when she goes to 40 hours, she's technically getting more per hour. So her salary's staying the same, it's just based on, divided out under 40 hours versus 48. The risk, if you will, financially to the town would be when she did overtime at that $40 an hour, she'd be getting a higher rate for overtime. Uh, the agreement between the fire union and management would be that her overtime rate would be at the $48 like any other fire, fi, any other fire lieutenant at that rate. Uh, but this simply is operationally, in fairness to her and for the Chief's management of what we need for inspections, um, that's the, the goal behind this. And I would, as a side, like to add, uh, the lieutenant has done a tremendous job in this position, and whatever she feels she needs to do this job better, uh, if it's a 40-hour week, I, I absolutely support that.
Great, great. Any, uh, discussion or questions from the Board?
Sounds reasonable to me.
Yeah, the good lieutenant is in favor of it? Then I am too.
You've got Mr. Mark smiling back there, that doesn't happen all the time, so.
I'll be glad to see you now.
You said it, we did it.
All right, great, is there a motion?
I think you're up.
I will move to change the current collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Sturridge and Teamsters Local 170 firefighters to change the Lieutenant of Fire Inspection's work week from 48 hours a week to 40 hours a week, and decrease her time off from 12 hours to eight hours.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
We're gonna make it effective tomorrow unless you have an objection.
Nope, that's fine, so we'll just sign, just, uh, do the official signatures, but we're good.
Have a great night, everybody.
Nice seeing you guys.
Thank you. Yeah, you don't have, you don't have to.
You're welcome.
Wait, I didn't know they were Teamsters. I would never voted for it, Mark.
No abatement.
Next up, consideration and possible action on the appointment of Joanne Cass as a part-time office assistant to the Sturridge Senior Center at an hourly rate of $18.44.
This is per recommendation of Ms. Wong.
Ms. Wong's recommendation?
Yeah, it's good for me, that was, yeah.
That's it, say no more, I didn't feel the key to add more.
I will, uh, I will, uh, move to appoint Joanne Cass as a part-time office assistant to the Sturridge Senior Center at an hourly rate of 1844.
Second. We have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor? Consideration and possible action on the selection of a Board of Selectmen representative, an alternate for the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission for fiscal year 2023.
This one's on you guys.
I, I think I'm there right now, and I've been on some Zooms and stuff, but it hasn't been, hasn't been a lot this year, so I'll, I'm happily keep doing it, or, I wonder you guys can do it, it's fine with me.
I will move to appoint.
That would take long.
Jamie Goodman as our representative for fiscal year 2023 to the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission.
I will second that. Now, we have a motion, a second, I'm assuming there's no discussion?
Yep.
All in favor?
Yeah, thanks, guys.
Thank you for your service.
And you need to pick an alternate, so you're not all off the hook yet.
I move to appoint Mary Dowling as the alternate.
I'm the alternate, I haven't had to do anything, so, that's fine.
And I will, uh, second that. So we have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Great.
Excellent. Consideration and possible action for the Board to vote on the proposed revision to the floodplain district bylaw and pass back to the planning board to begin the public hearing process.
So Jean Bouban is working with them on this, but, um, I did confirm that your voting on this tonight does not indicate whether you support, agree, or disagree with the plan at all. It is just simply a vote to authorize it to move to public hearing, it's more pro forma. I just wanted to be sure that you weren't voting to, like, say, we love the plan, when you haven't even had a chance to look at it. So, uh, it's just simply a vo, a vote to move the process forward.
I will move to send the proposed revision into the floodplain district bylaw and pass it back to the planning board to begin the public hearing process.
A second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion?
Uh, Robin, what are the relevant alterations, anything, just, or, should I just, it can keep?
Um, I don't, there are a few, um, there are a few changes, I don't think it's dramatic.
Okay.
I don't, hold me to, to record, but, uh, from what I gather in my conversations with Jean, I don't think we're gonna, it's gonna be horribly earth-shattering.
All right.
She has been battling with FEMA a little bit on some of the floodplain maps, there are a few properties impacted.
27 Audubon.
Few people will know specifically which they are, but yes.
All right, then.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor? Old business, Jamie.
None.
Mary.
No.
Ian?
I have no old, new.
Jamie?
None.
Mary?
No.
Ian?
I guess my one would be to, that you can pick up papers and run for Board of Selectmen now, so I will not be running due to a change of life, and, um, I would encourage anybody who has sat and watched these meetings and said, I could do a better job, now's your chance, come down to town hall, grab some papers.
A little extra pepper on the end.
It's been, it's been a very, it's been a great learning experience, I learned a lot about what makes a town tick, and, um, the good and the bad, but I'm hoping to stay involved in some of their aspect, but I just can't commit the time, so.
You've done an excellent job, you think.
Thanks, Ian.
A pleasure.
You're gonna be missed.
I still want to get a Christmas card.
You're on the list, you're on the spreadsheet.
I know, it's only on because of this, but.
I actually still have Jamie's at my house, because I didn't have his address, so.
How Christmasy, you're on the spreadsheet.
That's how we do it.
People give them anymore.
Yeah, we like to.
Well, Jamie lost his to a long-lost friend of mine that hadn't.
That sounds.
Stopped exchanging, and then I got one from her.
Nobody believes this, nobody believes it, we all know you just.
Because they got theirs the first round, because they sent them. Then I had a whole batch of people who didn't send me cards, but I still wanted to give cards to.
Nobody will beat Mary, other Mary with her handwritten, you know, distinct, special to everybody card, I, I can't compete with that, so.
That's the school teacher.
You just want the baby.
Yeah, that's all, yep, I, I know that, that's why we feature.
Baby. Um, as a, just a follow-up, um, I am gonna look for a place for February 11th for the morning, I have not forgotten if we're still on for that, for the retreat?
Yep.
Okay, so I'll find a place that we can do, is, did we say nine, nine o'clock, was that what we had decided?